Thank you for your service to our community. The state of Alabama is a proud county. He may also recognize one of our many significant achievements, his very actions. His first famous expression of being a part of movies of the country, "It's Alabama." He has previous to tell about his sister and his favorite young mother, Jose Adora, that is on the campus, his favorite young mother. He also will be a shining representative of Alabama's state competition, deserving of his own and first in the park. State competition begins anywhere within the range of Alabama. I would be proud to have the reputation provided in California. Thank you for your service to our community, the final of all other use in Alabama, of the thousands of potential candidates. And just typically, presented by the mayor of Alabama, the office of the mayor of Alabama, the mayor of Alabama. Will be a lady who is fortunate to work for him, speaking to children of the town of Alabama, of the county. With the terror of our nearby, that still, now still considered to be a burden. Ladies, this is one of the things of Alabama, one of the things we need to do.
All right, next item on the agenda is a request to address counsel regarding a permit request from Maggie Thompson of the Enterprise Junior Women's Club regarding their 5K. Is Ms. Thompson here? Okay, so, like I said, Ms. Thompson is representing Enterprise Junior Women's Club, who has requested to address the council to obtain a permit to hold the club's annual 5K on Saturday, April 5th, 2025, from 7:30 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., with a rain date of Saturday, April 12th, 2025. Is there anything else you want us to know?
No, that's pretty much it.
All right, well, we spoke to Chief Moore before the meeting. Are any questions from counsel? All right, here none, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the permit request as submitted.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the permit request as submitted. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same son. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now have the time of the meeting. Call privilege of the floor. This allows any persons that are present here this evening that wish to address the council may do so for three minutes. Do we have anybody that wishes to address the council? All right, please come forward. Clearly state your name in the microphone.
My name is Clark White, 33, Blue Ridge Circle. Thank you, counsel and mayor. I'll try to make my three minutes quick. We're in the midst of change, good change. Alabama was one of three states in the country that charged tax on hearing aids. House Bill 51 passed by the House and Senate and signed by the governor changes that October 1st. There are estimated 500,000 Alabamians living with hearing loss, and this will treat purchasers equally. Over 43% of our city's population is in the age range for hearing loss. That's over 12,000 people. Our continued local tax, or the tax that's still standing, I hope to get rid of, puts our citizens at a particular disadvantage. I believe that hearing aids should be exempt from taxation at the local level because taxing hearing aids creates an unnecessary financial barrier, hindering access to this essential healthcare tool for individuals seeking improved hearing and overall well-being. Untreated hearing loss can lead to isolation, depression, cognitive decline, fewer educational and job opportunities, and increased healthcare costs to the individual and state-provided medical assistance. Hearing aids are not optional. They are a health necessity, improving health, well-being, and quality of life. Hearing aids already cost on average between $1,000 and $4,000. Combined with Enterprise's 4% sales tax and Coffee County's 1% tax, this disproportionately impacts low-income individuals and seniors with hearing loss. Removing this tax burden would align Alabama with most states in the federal government, showing a commitment to making essential healthcare more accessible and affordable. Unfortunately, Alabama's hearing impaired individuals are at unfair disadvantage compared to our neighbors in Georgia, Florida, Mississippi, and Tennessee. Where sales tax are not imposed on hearing aids, our clients have the option to drive an hour, at most, to get the same product but at a 9% discount. Starting October 1st, that will become a 5% discount. I'm hoping it becomes a 0% discount. You may ask what this burden has put on our city. My estimate is about $50,000 in lost sales tax revenue annually. That's on the high end. I'd like for it to be lower than that. But we can look at the increase in employer pay, increased buying power, and increased traffic through our city, who won't be going to another one of three miracle ears, which is where I work for, that's just within one hour of our location. Fellow Alabamian Helen Keller said, "Blindness separates us from things, but deafness separates us from people." Madison, Alabama, is the first city in Alabama to remove sales tax on hearing devices. I'm hopeful the city of progress can take that on the chin and be the second one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Does anybody else wish to take privilege of the floor this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Cooper, and members of our council. My name's Adam Endemano. I live at 105 Grayson Drive, and I'm actually here just to share an event that we have coming up. We are hosting a 9/11 memorial stair climb at Enterprise High School. And kind of the reasoning behind us hosting this stair climb, about a year ago, actually almost exactly a year ago, my wife and I were trying to help our children kind of understand the significance of what happened on 9/11. And we looked around in the local area for an event that would help us to commemorate the lives of those lost and help our kids really start to understand what happened. And we were unable to find anything. So last year on 9/11, we went to the YMCA and climbed their little bleachers, the equivalent of 110 stories. Took a lot longer than we had hoped, but we realized the effect that an event like that could have. So over the last year, we've found and partnered with the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation to organize an event for the wire grass. We're holding it at Enterprise High School. It's going to be on September 7th. It will be a significant event. It's not a race, it's a memorial. We invite everyone to climb what they can, because that's what those heroes did at that time. Just a little bit about the event, and I promise I won't take much more time, but every participant will receive an honor badge, and they look just like this. And it has the name and the picture of one of those firefighters or first responders, the police officers and EMTs that gave their lives on 9/11. We also have the Huntsville Fire Department Pipes and Drums Band has agreed to come down. They sponsored the whole trip for us. So it's going to be a really powerful event. We just wanted to invite everyone to come to it, whether you're planning on climbing 110 floors or not. Come and kind of commemorate that. I'm going to make sure that each of you receive a copy of this, just the one-page flyer that we have, and we've been passing around town. But yeah, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Could you say your last name again?
Yep, it's Endemano.
Endemano.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Endemano. See anybody else here wish to take privilege of the floor? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to staff reports. Do we have any staff reports that were unable to give, be given during our work session? All right, we'll move on to old business. We'll have a public hearing in consideration of ordinance 07-1624 regarding the amendment of our zoning ordinance. I call for a public hearing prior to consideration of ordinance 07-1624, providing for an amendment to ordinance 02-2024 Enterprise zoning ordinance. The ordinance clarifies regulations applicable to special districts, highway corridor overlay district, use-specific regulations, home occupations, and administration and amendments. So all remaining provisions of ordinance 02-2024 remain unchanged and in full force and effect. So this public hearing is now open. What we'll do is, we got a staff report in our work session. So what I'll do is I'll open the floor for those that are opposed or against it, and then after the public has their chances, we'll close the hearing and we'll go into council discussion after we close the hearing. So is anyone here from the public that wishes to address the council regarding this ordinance? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and go into council discussion if we have a motion and a second. So is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adopt ordinance 07-1624.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. So I assume we're going to have further discussion. Mr. Paget, did you want to start off that discussion maybe with any questions of staff?
Yes, as I brought up in the work session, I think my main consideration on this is the fact that equipment is a little broad on the home occupation section to where it, I feel like, gives a difference of if someone has a home occupation that has a company vehicle versus someone that is working for a corporation that has a company vehicle, there's a difference in whether or not that can be parked in their driveway, or if street parking is allowed, whether it can be parked there. And that's really my main concern there is that home occupations are becoming more and more frequent, gig economy is becoming more and more frequent, and it's just my goal to make home occupations easier and not more difficult. At the same time, I understand why we're doing what we're trying to do, storage of materials, goods, supplies. I'm in 100% agreement of that, not being stored in the front yard. Just when it comes to equipment, I feel like that we didn't make a distinction there. If equipment will include logoed vehicles, then that's the spot that I'm concerned about.
So again, I think you just read it, but your concern is in Section 2, the next-to-last line in Section 2 that says, "Storage of materials, goods, supplies, or equipment used in the home occupation shall not exceed 20% of the side or rear yard combined."
Well...
And then, okay, so go ahead.
Let's see. It says outside display above that.
Okay.
It says outside display or storage of materials, goods, supplies, or equipment used shall be completely screened from public view, shall only be allowed in the side and rear yard of the primary structure. So, and I'm okay with pretty much everything, as long as equipment doesn't cover logoed vehicles that will come and go from the residence, very similar to logoed corporate vehicles. Just trying to make sure that we're not putting more of a burden on a home occupation than we would be someone that's driving home. And I see corporate vehicles all the time in residential driveways. That's just my concern there.
Explain a corporate vehicle to me. Are you talking about a car and a truck, or a bigger piece of equipment?
I've seen trucks with trailers, and I've seen trucks with just logos. My understanding is that even a truck with a logo would be prohibited in this.
So I've got, I guess, for instance, and Barry or Thomas, I guess, you tell me if this might fit into a category of what Greg's referring to. Some of, let's say a tree trimming service or a lawn service, sometimes they get home occupation license, right?
The more common of those would be the lawn care service that would get the home occupation license, because that normally is the business.
So I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Greg's concern would be, so oftentimes a lawn service is owned by somebody who owns a pickup truck, has a logo on the side of it. He both uses this logoed pickup truck for his personal use, driving around town, taking his kids to ball practice school, also uses it to pull his lawn equipment with. So the way this ordinance reads is he would now, one interpretation would be that he would now need to park that vehicle out of view from the road, right?
One interpretation of that, yes, sir. And I think, and we could specify more in the ordinance, when it comes down to equipment, we were more or less talking about the trailers, talking about the actual equipment that they used, not the trucks and things like that, because we understand that while you may use a truck for a business unless it's a commercial vehicle as defined by Alabama DOT. Like, we just consider those residential vehicles. And so we don't ever...
But is that your concern, is that it could be interpreted and enforced in that manner?
Well, in that matter, but you know, also, I'm thinking that we're not taking into consideration that, you know, some of these lawn care companies, like you're talking about, will have, you know, open trailers with this equipment stacked high, could be an eyesore. I get that being an issue. Others have enclosed trailers where everything's completely hidden, but there's like a logo of that on the side. If you had a residential person that had a, just a covered, an enclosed trailer parked in their driveway without a logo on it, that's probably not going to be considered an issue. But you have that same trailer that has a logo on it, and they have a home occupancy license, then now it's an issue. I understand that what we're trying to accomplish, and I'm not trying to fight that, I think it's a great thing that we're trying to accomplish. I just want to be careful that we're not making it a difficult situation for a home occupancy.
Excellent. So what are, I guess, maybe paint a better picture for us of what problems we're trying to solve here. Refresh our memory on what precipitated this getting added.
So this problem that we're trying to solve is that when you have a home occupation, you want the home occupation to not alter the neighborhood that you're living in. You want them to have the ability to run their business out of there, because they may not be, and that may not make them any sense for them to go rent a commercial space or things like that. But you don't want to lose the residential part of your neighborhood by allowing a home occupation. So when you write, so within the home occupation ordinance, we try to allow you to run your business, but also maintain the residential side of your neighborhood. I think with this amendment, what the point of the amendment was, was to limit the amount of goods that could be stored, where they would be stored, along with supplies, equipment, and things like that, that would allow from the road for your home to appear as a home, not appear as a place where you store a bunch of equipment for your job, or a bunch of materials for the work that you do, so forth and so on. And that's what we're trying to accomplish with the amendment.
Yeah, I think part of it was because a skid loader, front loader, whatever it might be, that's what was in several of the neighborhoods in the residential areas, just heavy equipment in the front.
And things like sawmills, finished products, things that weren't explicitly forbidden, where they would be explicitly forbidden the way this is written.
Just with the discussion we had tonight, my recommendation is, if it's okay with y'all, is I would recommend that we pull or table that one item on the home occupation, and let us, let staff come back and reword this section to bring it back to you.
So would that be Section 2, the entire section?
It'd be that, Section 2, Section 2? Section 2, which is ordinance 02-2024, Article 7. Let us rewrite that home occupation section to maybe accomplish what Mr. Paget is recommending, and bring that back to you as a separate item that y'all could review, and then we'll get it back at a next council meeting in the future, so that hopefully that that won't create another problem. Trying to solve one, creating another problem. We don't want to do that, so...
But that would mark, you know, obviously that would keep Section 1, and Section 3, Section 4, 5, 6, 7, obviously alive, so we would at least be accomplishing some of what y'all were trying to accomplish.
And what I'd recommend we do, and I was talking to the C. Attorney, is let us rewrite that Section 70802, which is the home occupation section. Let us rewrite that section. We may want to put a couple of bullet points on there to make this a little bit clearer, and to allow people to do certain things and not do certain things. So if it's okay with you, my recommendation would be, if you don't mind, table this or pull this one for tonight, and give us a chance to go back and rewrite this section.
And I feel pretty certain that the unintended consequences that I'm talking about is not the target of this, you know, from discussions that we've had. But sometimes if we're not careful, we can draw such a wide net, we bring in things that we didn't intend to. Because I'm very, as I said, very sympathetic to people having a sawmill in their front yard, or heavy equipment sitting out there, the eyesores.
You're sympathetic to the neighbors, I take.
To the neighbors, yes. Not to the people having it there. I'm sorry. Sympathetic to cleaning that up and making it look better. I mean, we definitely want our city to look better, that's why we're passing numerous ordinances to try to clean up our city. I just, you know, always try to balance what we do with the right of the property owner versus the best interest of the city, and I think we could do a little bit better job of striking a balance here.
Okay.
If it's okay with you, we could bring this back in two weeks in a work session with a proposed language change for this one, and let y'all get comments back from you, and if you like what we bring back to you at next council meeting, then we could bring it back as a formal recommendation and start this process on this one item.
So you hear the recommendation, you know, we've got two, three paths forward, we've got a motion and a second for this ordinance as drafted and submitted and advertised. We can table, we can pass it, we can table the whole thing, or we can, or I'll entertain a motion to take Mr. Mott's recommendation of striking Section 2. So what is the pleasure of the council?
I recommend that we take Mr. Mott's recommendation and strike this Section 2. I do would like to say that I approve of what you all are trying to accomplish, and I hope you succeed. I support you 100%.
So was that a motion?
That is a motion.
So I hear a motion to strike Section 2. Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to strike Section 2 of ordinance 07-1624. Is there any discussion?
Does that include a rewrite that he talked about, 708.2?
So, Mr. Grolesby, would you clearly state your...
All right, I make a motion that we take Mr. Barry Mott's suggestion that they rewrite Section 2. We will eliminate that section, go ahead and approve the rest of the recommendation amendment.
All right, you hear that motion to strike Section 2 in its entirety. So is, and Mr. Paget, would you mind restating your second?
Second.
All right, with a motion and a second to strike Section 2 of 07-1624, is there any further discussion?
I just, I had a similar question as Scotty. I just want to be sure this section that they mentioned, 70802, that's contained in the Section 2. So that will cover that.
So if we struck Section 2, we would be striking that language. So any rewrite of that, right, Mr. Mott, would include a rewrite of Section 70802? Yeah. So that entire section will get struck if this motion passes. Now, to be clear, we're just addressing the striking of Section 2 right now with this motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion about striking Section 2? Hearing none, all in favor of striking Section 2, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same son. Motion carries, and Section 2 is struck. So now we're back to the consideration of the ordinance 07-1624. Is there any further discussion on that with the struck section? Ashley, do we need to bring another, the motion's still on the floor, right? Do we need to restate our motion?
I would say the motion is still on the floor, but I don't think it would hurt to restate it to pass.
With the Section struck.
With the Section 2 struck, now that that's passed.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 07-1624 with Section 2 struck.
I move to adopt ordinance 07-1624 with the Section 2 struck.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Holds in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same son. Motion carries.
All right.
All right, moving on to old business, I'm sorry, new business, the adoption of FY 2025 Transportation Plan. I call for a motion to adopt the City of Enterprise Fiscal Year 2025 Transportation Plan in accordance with the Rebuild Alabama Act. The plan adopted annually provides that estimated revenues of $195,000 anticipated from the Rebuild Alabama Act, which is the fuel bill, fund during the 2025 fiscal year will be used to perform roadway improvements, repairs, resurfacing, reconstruction, or maintenance toward completion of the FY 25 Phase 5 master street resurfacing list and/or as match monies for any state or federal grant-funded projects to perform roadway improvements, repairs, resurfacing, reconstruction, or maintenance within the city's existing street road network during said fiscal year. Do I hear a motion?
Move to adopt the Fiscal Year 2025 Transportation Plan as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Fiscal Year 2025 Transportation Plan as submitted. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same son. Motion carries. We want to have a public hearing regarding public nuisance properties regarding excessive weed growth. I call for a public hearing regarding the abatement and removal of noxious or dangerous weeds at the following properties. 204 West Adams Street, 406 Dixie Drive, 502 South Widda Street. So this public hearing is now open. We'll handle this similarly to the previous public hearing. We'll start with 204 West Adams. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to address the council, either for or against this resolution? What about 406 Dixie Drive? What about 502 South Widda Street? Okay, Thomas, would you give us a brief report on what we're doing here and why?
Yes, sir. So the three addresses that you just named, they were all found to be in violation of our excessive weed growth ordinance that we passed in June of this year. To be in violation of this, the grass and weeds have to be above 12 inches. In all of these properties, the weeds were probably two foot tall, if not higher. We followed Alabama state law when it comes to notification of the public, which includes a certified letter, and then also posting signs in the, or on the property, so that people could be able to see them and be notified of when this public hearing was going to be held, and the ordinance number, so forth and so on. With this, we will declare them a public nuisance, and by declaring them a public
And by declaring them a public nuisance, we can review and consider a resolution to abate the weeds and bring the property into compliance.
All right. And you distributed pictures to the council prior to tonight's meeting regarding these properties, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, any, any questions of Thomas before we close the public hearing? All right, any other staff comments? Okay. All right, this public hearing is now closed and we will move on to reviewing considering resolution oh eight twenty twenty four, declaring weed nuisance and direct abatement. I introduce and call for consideration of resolution oh eight twenty twenty four, declaring certain properties which are overgrown with weeds, scrub, wild bushes, grass, and other vegetable growth as injurious to the health, safety, and welfare of the community as nuisances and ordering that the properties be abated. Do I hear a motion?
I move to adopt resolution oh eight twenty twenty four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution oh eight twenty twenty four. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now move on to review and consider resolution oh eight twenty twenty four A, declaring certain properties a public nuisance. I introduce and call for consideration of resolution oh eight twenty twenty four A, declaring certain properties which are overgrown with weeds, scrub, wild bushes, grass, and other vegetable growth as injurious to the health, safety, and welfare of the community as nuisances and calling for a public hearing to be held at the regular meeting scheduled for September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. Do I hear a motion?
Move to adopt resolution oh eight two zero two four A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution oh eight twenty twenty four A. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now consider a request to purchase janitorial equipment and supplies regarding the Recreation and Aquatic Center. I introduce and call for consideration of a request from Billy Powell, Director of Community Services and Recreation, to purchase janitorial, cleaning equipment, and floor mats from Enterprise Paper and Janitorial through Purchasing Cooperation of America, BCA, at a cost of one hundred thousand four hundred six dollars and twenty six cents. The items are included in the FY twenty four budget and under the budgeted amount. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the purchase request as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase request as submitted. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now review and consider street lighting modification for Hunter's Hill Subdivision, Phase Four. I introduce and call for consideration of a request from Thomas Hardy, Assistant Director of Engineering, to install six forty nine watt Type Three black fixtures and poles in Hunter's Hill Subdivision, Phase Four, at an annual cost of five hundred sixty dollars and sixteen cents. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the street lighting request as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the street riding, lighting request as submitted. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will now introduce an ABC license request from Makata Enterprise. I introduce a request from Makata Japanese Steakhouse LLC, doing business as Makata Enterprise, for a restaurant retail liquor license located at eleven oh nine Louisville Circle, Suite Five. Additionally, I call for a public hearing to be held at the regular meeting scheduled for September third, twenty twenty four. Mayor, do you have a report for us?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer my congratulations to Molly Marsh, twenty twenty four distinguished young woman of Coffee County as well as the rest of her family. Speaking of our students, a reminder, as we're getting back into the routine of a new school year, I encourage everyone to be mindful of the buses and to follow the rules of the road. Please keep an eye out for those walking to and from school. You may have heard me say, whether there's a boy, there's a boy or girl. Pay attention to your surroundings. We want everyone to have a safe school year. I received a letter from Secor, the area agency on aging. An onsite assessment was recently completed at the Enterprise Senior Center, and I'm proud to say that our program received high marks. Specifically, the report noted that the classes and activities as best practices noted records were organized and accurate and commanded staff of serving meals to the seniors. The report also noted that the growth in participation. I would like to give a special mention to Birgit Briggs and Angela Lane, as well as the other members of the Senior Center staff for a job well done. The Enterprise Parks and Recreation Department has put out a community survey seeking feedback related to fitness programs at the new Recreation and Aquatic Center. The facility is still under construction, but our team is hard at work to prepare for the grand opening in just a few short months. Public feedback is essential, so we can encourage everyone to fill out the survey on our website. Thank you to everyone who joined us this past Saturday for the Alabama Sweet Tea Festival at the Enterprise Civic Center and the festival field. Despite the weather, we had a great turnout and a wonderful support from our community. A few upcoming events to add to your calendar. The City of Enterprise will be closed on Monday, September second for Labor Day. All city offices will be closed. Monday's garbage will, route will be collected Tuesday that week, and Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday. Also in September, the entire community is invited to the ceremony of the Command Sergeant Major, Major Benny G. Atkins State Veterans Home on Friday, September thirteenth at ten a.m. We hope you will join us as we open this incredible facility for our veterans. As always, you can stay up to date with the latest news from the city through our website by following the City of Enterprise on social media. I would also like to recognize the Boy Scouts of America. If y'all would just stand and let us give you a round of applause. Thank you for coming tonight. You may be seated. Uh huh. All right.
Ms., is that it, Mayor?
Yes, that's it.
Ms. Rich.
I'm glad to see everyone tonight. Thank you to the two citizens that provided us information during our privilege on the floor tonight. Welcome, Boy Scouts, as always, always glad to have you here with us. I did want to mention, I read on Facebook, I think yesterday, that Main Street brought home, I think it was several Excellence Awards for some accomplishments that they've made downtown. So Mariah didn't take privilege of the staff report to let us know that, but you can check them out on Facebook and see all the, the great things that they're doing in our downtown area and how they're racking up all over the state, these major awards. So kudos, Mariah, to you and your Main Street board. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Mr. Goolsby.
Ditto what Ms. Sonia said, plus I'd like to add, I've had a couple of negative comments from the public about the city trying to control people's cutting the grass, cutting their weeds. We're not talking about the hair grass that grows a, a foot high in a week. Thomas was very, he said this weed's a foot, two feet high. We have a house right here at two oh four West Adams, the weeds are so big, you cannot tell a house is on the lot. So this is something big. It's not something little that we're trying to, to do. And, and as far as the vehicles with the home occupations, we're not trying to hurt anybody with their home occupations. We just like to keep the neighborhood looking like a neighborhood. Thank y'all for coming tonight.
Mr. Paget.
I'd like to congratulate Molly Marsh tonight on her, winning her award. Also, I think it's a great thing that we're doing with this weeds and nuisance property abatement and taking care of our city. And I drove around the circle today and was very excited to see lights going up on the south side of the circle. And it was a long time coming. That project has been taking a long time. It's finally coming up. It's good to see that. And also like to welcome the Boy Scouts tonight.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for coming and thank you for all those folks, our citizens that are watching us online. Thank you to Ms. Marsh, she's an awesome young lady. And, and Scouts, you know, it's great to see y'all here, especially, I know you're probably working on that Citizen and Community merit badge, but I remember that way back hundreds of years ago for me. But to our city workers, over the weekend, I was out there and I'll tell you, I was just amazed at everyone that just pulled and, and got that Sweet Tea Festival off going again this year. And I know several of the folks with, worked fifteen hours plus out there. And if my watch showed twenty-three thousand steps, I know there was a lot more than that with, with those folks. So again, thank you to our city workers for all they do for us and all our first responders. God bless. Good night.
Yeah, ditto what, what everybody said, Mr. White. Thank you for, for presenting your concerns regarding the, the hearing aids tax. Mr. Endamano, I think I said his name right, really looking forward to learning more about this nine eleven memorial stair climb, certainly a, a fitting tribute to, to those heroes on, on that day. So we will stand adjourned. Our next council meeting, our work session, regular work session and council meeting will be September third. But if you have not had enough tonight, please join us back Thursday morning at eight thirty a.m., right? Eight thirty a.m. in this room, right? Eight thirty a.m. in this room. We will be staying as long as it's required to, to hammer out our budget, first round of budget hearings and, and conversations. So we've got to get that budget passed next month to begin our FY twenty five on October first. So we will stand adjourn until then. Thank you, have a good evening.